All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, January 23rd, 2023 meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. The time is currently seven o'clock PM. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum of council present?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Next is invocation and pledge of allegiance by Stephanie Otto, commander of the Jeremy E. Ray American Legion Post 324.
Recover. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Guide our hearts and our mind in spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Empower your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen. Recover. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Next up, presentations. We have presentation of Police Department Employee of the Fourth Quarter and 2022 Employee of the Year Award by Stephanie Otto, commander of the Jeremy E. Ray American Legion Post 324.
Thank you. Each quarter, the American Legion Post 324 Jersey Village Police Department Employee of the Quarter selection committee meet to review a list of candidates selected by their peers. This is in no way a simple task, as all employees of the department are outstanding individuals that serve a purpose greater than themselves. For the fourth quarter of 2022, the American Legion's selection of Officer of the Quarter is Officer Shelby Securo. Officer Securo has shown a high level of professionalism, dedication, and peractivity. Her job, she loves her job, and her work performance shows it. We thank you for your service and dedication to this department and our community. All these attributes work together to ensure the Jersey Village Police Department works smoothly and provides our residents peace of mind and makes Jersey Village a destination community. Many other officers were nominated this quarter. Thank you for your continued performance and dedication to our community. So Officer Securo is not here. Okay. Employee of the Year 2022. Throughout the year, this committee receives countless nominations from within the Jersey Village Police Department in which fellow officers highlight their peers for many reasons. Each quarter, we convene and discuss each nomination that will make, that makes an employee stand out, excuse me, one from another. All of these nominations are great nominations, and it's truly humbling to read and discuss each one of them. All of the employees of the Jersey Village Police Department serve a position that comes with so much weight, and our utmost respect and appreciation is extended to them as a whole. Employee of the Year is a selection from the four employees of the quarter for that year. With this nomination, we consider each position served, each performance of that position, and the impact made by the employee within the department, the city, and ultimately the residents and businesses within the community. With that said, the American Legion JV, Jersey Village Police Department Employee of the Year selection for 2022 is Officer Oscar Garcia. Thank you for all your dedication to our department and the city. Thank you.
Congratulations, and congratulations to all of our, all of the candidates for that award. Our, our community is, is enriched by your contribution and your service to the city. So thank you so much, all of you. Well, that will go to, oh, it's our presentation of Employee of the Month.
Mayor Gessler, our employee of the month is unable to attend tonight, but I would still like to read where it was written from. Our January 2023 Employee of the Month is Barry Kappas. He's the lead infrastructure technician for Public Works. During the recent freeze event, Barry single-handedly worked around the clock responding to over 30 calls for service from residential and commercial water customers. Along the way, he encountered countless mishaps that tested his knowledge and experience and also assisted in resolving issues at the water facilities. No matter the time of day, Barry was quick to respond and more than willing to lend a helping hand to his coworkers where needed. From organizing City Hall to assisting pool operations, Barry did it all. Luckily, he still had time to swing by Home Depot and pick up his new toolbox, which was a Christmas present from his wife. Barry's a go-getter attitude, and his willingness to help is a great quality. He's reliable and truly cares about the well-being of the department, city, and its residents. Barry's commitment to go above and beyond is deserving of this recognition. Congratulations, Barry. We're honored to have him as our January 2023 Employee of the Month.
Congratulations to Barry. We hate to see events happen that, that call these things to, for people to come to service, but it's always nice to know that we have people who are ready and able and call, you know, answer the call when, when needed. So, thank you. That brings us to citizens' comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the city council will be heard at this time. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject, and will respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the city council. The first card I have is from Mark Malloy.
Hi, my name is Mark Malloy, 7803 Hamilton Circle, past city council member for the city of Jersey Village, Texas. Citizens' comments for the 1/23/2023 city council meeting. Please make my verbal comments and documents given to the city secretary a permanent record of this meeting. So, on your agenda here, I see that all of the agenda items are going to be on the consent agenda. There's no regular agenda items. And I see that you're going to receive reports from the TERS 2 and the TERS 3 boards tonight. And I'm asking that the consent agenda items involving TERS 2 and TERS 3 reports be moved to the regular agenda for city council discussion. And so if you don't end up moving them to the, to the regular agenda, then I'm going to go ahead and go over some of the information about the TERS 2 first. Okay, the TERS 2 was created in 2017, and at that time, the, the city had to set the base tax rate for the TERS 2. And at that time, the TERS 2 property value was $20,633,175. And so, for the last, all these years since the TERS was created, the city has not been able to collect any revenue to do any projects on that area because the values have been below what the base rate was set at.
Well, it probably had more to do with the fact that the city owned a substantial amount of land in that area, causing it to become tax exempt.
Okay, and so anyway, then, on TERS 3, it shows, and it doesn't say in the information how many houses were purchased in this report. So is it three houses that have been purchased due with, involving this report? Is it more than three houses, or?
I believe it's five. Three, three houses total, three houses, sorry.
Three houses? And then from, I understand that the city has purchased another one of those houses, I guess, that's going to be for this year budget. It's supposed to be the house that's on the southeast corner of Lakeview and Jersey. Is that correct?
I will, I will accept staff's indication that that's the case, yes.
Okay, so anyway, just talking about the three houses that have already been purchased from the, by, by the city from the property owners, the information that it's showing is that the city had allocated a million dollars to purchase homes in that TERS 3 zone. And that what it's showing is, you know, they're counting this as a revenue, as a million dollars. Okay, and then it shows expenditures of $999,532.98, which is the amount of money that the city spent to purchase the homes and the other additional expenses involved in demolition of the homes and then clearing of the lot to be able to sell the property. Okay, the city took and did that. They cleared the lots, and they did sealed bids to take and try to get, from what I understand, individuals that the city want, is going to decide they will be the ones that are going to be asked. It's not like they're going to be put out to open bid. It's specific individuals that?
No, the, the, it was, it was an open bid process. Anyone could have bid as long as they could meet the conditions of the bid.
Okay. So anyway, so basically, the expenditures for the three houses that were purchased, like, it was $999,532.98. The, you know, the bids, from what I understand, there was no bids that came in at the amount that the city would accept to take and sell the lots. And so, you know, I'm just, I, the question I have is, is the city going to take and stick to the $96,000 per lot to sell the lots? Or because they haven't sold the lots, are they going to consider reducing the value to maybe get the lots sold?
That's for future discussion.
Okay. That's about all I had for tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mark. Next card I have is from Jim Fields.
Mayor of City Council, my name is Jim Fields, 16413 St. Hillier. Thank you for allowing me to contribute to tonight's meeting. First, I want to say thanks to the Fire Department, Police Department, you have taken for granted, and love your service and your dedication to taking care of us. One thing I also want to say, thanks for the city manager for fixing the street over here at Jersey and Rio Grande. There's a bump there. I appreciate that. And then there's another one. I didn't know it was a dead body or something buried underneath it. It was at the corner of Country Club, Circle, and Rio Grande. I'm sure if, if, I'm sure Mr., you know, Councilwoman Watson would know, because you have to go up and down that, that bump. Do you remember where that was? So thank you again. I really appreciate that. I remember one day, just side note, that the police were trying to apprehend somebody, and I went, guy flying, airbound sparks, it was just like in a movie, anyway. So no, no more fun there anymore, so. All right, moving on. Oh, again, Mayor, thanks for having the, calling the town hall meetings on the stadium and TERS 2. One of them I couldn't attend. I was sick. Again, thank you for that. The only thing I want, I'd like to ask was at the meeting I went to, if we could in the future, introduce the company that's trying to work with us rather than addressing them by first name. That was kind of unsettling to me, go, hey, Chris, what's going on? And I was just, you know, please introduce him. This is Mr. so-and-so, and he's helping us. And going on with that, I think this KHJR should be replaced. In October of 2022, I'd made a recommendation to you, Mayor, and city council on an excellent company that's here in Houston with a bunch of PEs, and I think they can do a better job, and I'm hoping that you can reconsider that. We've already, you know, and then I heard that KHJR and collabora, there are some ties there. We've already blown $500,000, and I'm concerned. So please make sure, I would personally, you know, KHJR, I'd go ahead and replace him. I just don't, you know, ever since one of the tenants here caught them advertising, he says he sold the property. That wasn't what the issue was. The issue was that he was never involved in the project, they claimed they were, so I don't. One other thing, okay. Oh, on TERS 3, are we going to be able to sell, are you going to be selling or buying properties from investors?
I don't think that's been part of the discussion at all now.
No, I mean, but is it, is that going to happen? Because there's two houses on there from Open Door that are for sale.
As we explained at the TERS 3 meeting last week, the, that board reviews those properties every annually, so that, that board makes the recommendations to the council on an annual basis.
Yeah, just to be clear, that, that, I, let me rephrase my statement. That has not been discussed amongst council, whatever the TERS has discussed, I'm not sure, but, you know.
Well, the one thing I was told, it was strictly for the help of people that live there, not investment company. That was what was said before, so I'm just, you know, making sure. Then, this house that, that's going to be, has been purchased for this year, is it 2023? Is that the house on the corner of, is it the south or north house on Jersey Drive and Lakeview?
I'm having a tough time picturing my map in the.
It's across from my house. The light one. Jim, it's across from my house.
Well, cat, or we're talking about the one that's green, white one?
If you're talking about the, hold on, hold on, guys.
1525 Jersey Drive has been purchased by the city.
Um, thank you, Ashley. Ashley sits right across from her house. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ashley. I was concerned because the one across the street is owned by a rental company. I was just curious, so. One last thing I was going to say, Mayor, City Council, we have two members on City Council that are, have ownership into a brewery, and I am concerned that here they are, if you have, get the stadium, that I, you know, if they're going to have the right to sell beer there, I think they should not be in the decision-making of, of putting a stadium in if it does go through. Because currently, I understand, we sell the Senate Avenue beer at the golf course, which I think is wrong, because I don't think anybody on City Council should be selling beer that they have ownership. Let's see, anything else?
And just to be clear, Jim, City Council doesn't make those sorts of minute decisions.
I know, but it's, but, but we have people on City Council that are going to vote.
We don't vote on that, Jim.
Nor, nor does the city run that concession stand.
That is run entirely by the backyard grill.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we're using backroad grill. Two people on this City Council make a deal, so they can serve beer, so now it's okay. I still think that's wrong. Shouldn't do that. You shouldn't be on City Council selling any wares of anything, so, anyway. I think that's it, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Last coming card I have is from Ashley Brown.
Ashley Brown, 15602 Lakeview. Apologies, I am not prepared, as this happened at 6:15 tonight, so I've had to do some quick Googling to back up the reason I'm annoyed. So I got a call from your very nice code enforcer that Austin received complaints about the construction signs in my yard. So Reed versus Towne Gilbert, Arizona, please feel free to correct me, from the Supreme Court in 2014 states, that I can have whatever sign I want in my yard. You guys cannot limit my sign. Hold on, let me find it. I went to journals.chicago.edu, and there was a whole thing about how it, content-based laws are unconstitutional. So maybe you need to look that up, but I'm really annoyed that it's my property, it's not obscene, it doesn't, I mean, it's been 14 years since I had con law, so again, correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't violate any pillars of the First Amendment, it doesn't have anything bad on it, it has no cussing. It is no different than the Jersey cow that stays out in this gentleman's yard year-round than the JV high school signs. I mean, I'm, the contractor was really nice to me, he did great work. The work was done last week. The code enforcer said it had been weeks of complaints. I put in my PIR, I'd like to know who complained, because who cares what's in my yard? You guys have yards that have grass growing over, over off of like Solomon or whatever. You have all these other houses that look like crap, and you're going to care about my sign? That is my First Amendment right, my constitutional right to have whatever I want in my yard? Give me a break. Your, your code enforcer was very nice. She said, I didn't want to come into your yard, I was afraid I might, you know, get shot or yelled at. You're welcome to call me anytime, you're welcome to come in my yard, I'm happy to comply, but I don't agree. And then she goes, you should really get to know your city council. I said, oh, you have no idea who I am. So yes, I was going to come tonight, but now I will speak. I'm really annoyed, because it's my yard, and we should have whatever right we want, whether it's a cow dressed up for every holiday, whether it's the Grinch hanging from your house on Lakeview all year round till this January, whatever it may be, all of that's allowed. And you guys let me, let P3 keep their sign in my yard for like nine months after the elevation? Like, give me a break. Not fair, unconstitutional. Please look it up. Reed versus the township in Gilbert in Arizona. I mean, I sit in there Googling and finding stuff. So again, normally I'm more prepared. Anyways, I do appreciate the town halls. I learned a lot from them. I personally am not convinced that it's the right decision, but if you guys are going to make a decision, I really, really please ask that you bring those parties involved so we can get to know them, maybe feel more comfortable. I did really like some of the things you said about how it's not our tax dollars going to build it. That was like a huge relief to me. Not saying I'm sold, but that was a big, big relief that it's not going to be our funds funding everything. And I really appreciate the, the open forum and the dialogue and the conversation. Maybe have a stopwatch next time, that everybody sticks to the five-minute rule, Mr. Mayor, but, uh.
We'll take it.
I got cut off. But, but anyways, so again, apologies for not being, you know, more prepared, but I would like to know what was so bad about those signs that weeks of complaints, when the work was just done the end of the week? Like, seriously? I mean, we pulled a permit, we did everything we were supposed to do. I mean, I had a tarp on my roof for a whole frigging year, and that was fine? But the sign, like, I just, I'm just so annoyed and mad, like, I just, and it seems something stupid, but, but anyways, I put my PRI, PIR in, I would like to know who the complaints are, because isn't that public knowledge? Like, isn't everything that's done supposed to be public? I want to know. So anyways, please look up the law, and if your eyes are in violation, please fix it. Because according to Chicago EDU and caselaw.com and several other fine law places, you're in violation. Thank you.
Sure, of course.
Hi, Ashley. Whoa, it's really loud. Now, I'll save you that PR, PIR, I was one of the people that complained. I'll be really upfront. Several years ago, when we had our roof replaced, the workers had been gone for about 30 minutes, and they, within that 30 minutes of timeframe, I already had a code person drive by, pick up the signs, put them on my front porch with a note saying this was out of ordinance. And to me, it was like, that's fine. I had no idea. I didn't even know there was an ordinance. They put them in the yard, I didn't pay attention, but it stuck with me. And to be honest, for me on that, that's about following the rules, and it is one of our ordinances. You are not supposed to have that stuff if the workers are not present. So I'm one of them. I can't tell you who the rest are, because I don't know, but I'm more than happy to own that.
I don't have a whole lot of experience in that area of law, more the penal code than all of that, so I'll leave that for Justin. But the only concerning thing I heard there, the only, the thing that concerns me the most there, not the only thing, but the thing is, is weeks of complaint and it just now got enforced? So that's something that, if that's true, hey, it may not be, I'm not, you're going to respond anyway, but I'm hopeful that our code enforcement is more responsive than that.
When I looked at that case earlier, the notice of violation letter was sent the same day or the day after it was reported in the app.
Well, just as, as you, you were not as prepared, I didn't know that I was going to be asked to answer questions about the constitutionality regarding commercial speech on residential property. We will, we will, we will look into it, to be sure. I, I will just say, just as you said, it's been a long time. So you've studied constitutional law, it's been probably about 18 years for me, so I mean, I'm a little rusty on the generalities. I do know commercial speech usually has less protection than, say, other forms of speech, like holidays or religious displays or things of that nature, or political. The state of Texas is very big on protecting political. But I, I will just say this, not saying that this is the case here, but I think we can all agree that this is the case here, but I think we can all agree that when it comes to commercial speech, there are going to be some limits. No one wants someone to be able to display a billboard in their front yard. It's not as if it's just a completely free-for-all. But we will, and I'm not saying that's the case with yours, but obviously, we do always want to make sure that we are completely in compliance with state law and with constitutional standards, and we can always take a look. But my, my suspicion is that the, because that's something we do fairly regularly, it's probably in compliance.
Well, you're welcome to DM me. You all have my email.
Sure, we'll, we'll look into it. I don't know, Justin, if you've got anything to add, since you deal with this on a more regular basis than I do.
I'm familiar with the Reed case, and we can just look at your ordinance and make sure it's compliant.
Well, we'll double-check it, make sure. We, we, more than anything else, we want to make sure all of our ordinances are completely constitutional. Well, that is all that I had in terms of citizen comment cards. That brings us to the City Manager Report. Austin Bleece.
Mayor and councilors, the report's there. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Austin, it's, it's not on the report, but just a quick question, or probably we'll follow up over the next few months, but the legislature has just gone into session at the state, and there's a lot of talk about property tax rebates and probably a number of items that will affect what we can and can't do as a city, and what we should and shouldn't do, et cetera. Anything on your radar right now, or is it just too early in the session?
There's a lot of talk, but this early in session, there's not a lot of action. TML does a great job of tracking all the bills that would impact cities. They're a great organization that definitely provides us a lot of benefit. We always utilize their resources to help track all those bills and provide the analysis. There's other entities that we track along with, like the Economic Development Commission, HGAC. So we, we do a good job of trying to stay in the know about as many bills as we can.
Any other questions or comments for the City Manager? We will move on then to the consent agenda. Do any members of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for consideration in the regular agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull off item F6 from the consent agenda.
F6 will be considered after the consent agenda. Any other council members wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda at this time.
I'll move to pass the consent agenda excluding F6.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The consent agenda passes unanimously. We will then consider what was previously on the consent agenda's item F6, consider ordinance number 2023-02, amending the annual budget of the city of Jersey Village for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022, and ending September 30th, 2023, in the amount not to exceed $86,207.16 in order to adjust line item 02-46-7020 to cover the cost of the Seattle Water Plant Booster Pump Replacement Project and authorizing the City Manager to execute all documents with CPMR Houston, Inc. for pump repair and replacement services in connection with this project. Robert Basford, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Warren and Council. So yeah, one of the requests when we went on a tour with council was the replacement of the three booster pumps at the Seattle Water Plant. Basically, after diving in and getting into the real scope of the project, the, the budget for the three pumps came in, $86,000 over budget. We understand that the initial estimate was a rough estimate, and, you know, once getting into the actual scope of work, that is a little more than we expected. Basically, how it works now is the options we have is we can, you know, do this budget amendment and knock all three booster pumps out at the same time, or we can do two and then push the third one to next year. I believe there was mobilization costs from CPMR, so essentially, that's what it is. We're just coming to council, asking for a budget amendment, and our estimation was, was under.
Okay, discussion amongst council on this item.
Can you explain to me with the booster pumps, as far as when y'all went out for, was this, was this a bid process, or is this something where it's just you guys go through the same, I'm going to say contractor, for lack of understanding exactly what they do?
CPMR Houston is a tips contractor. That's a interlocal purchasing system, so they're one of the trusted vendors that have gone through their vetting process. They've done some work with us in the past and some recent work, and they're pretty knowledgeable and credible.
So is the estimate just significantly changed from when we originally got the numbers, or was it just off to begin with?
I believe it was off to begin with.
Part of that is the person that got us that estimate gave it to us, management verbally, and he's no longer with us, and we can't find anything in writing, so we're not really entirely positive where that original estimate came from. So that's another piece of this problem.
And Austin and Robert, I contacted you guys about this last week, and I mean, we went over, and there's a few other things that we're looking at in the, but not a lot, right, that, that we're, that we're, so just, I'm saying all that to say, staff is actively reviewing the budget to make sure that any items then are brought before council and we can be prepared. Just, so they'll do a great job with the budget, and I just wanted to highlight, this is one of those things where inflation and other things happen, and it's a little more.
Well, I for one have no interest in not replacing them. I, I like water, and I like it to be clean and arrive when I like it.
And I would agree that we need to do all three in order to save the mobilization costs associated with it.
Yeah, I, I, I totally understand where, you know, the difficult situation where you kind of, you received a figure and, and you don't quite have the ability to go back and trace what the, the change was. So I, you know, I understand that. In the future, it would be helpful to, to be able to go back and look and say, was it a matter of a, a mistake of the, what we were looking to do, or was it, we received more information about the nature of the project that wasn't readily apparent at the, at the time? Was it a case of inflation? That being said, this is definitely not something that is really an optional thing. It's something we have to do in, in order to keep everything in good working order. So I, that doesn't change the fact that, that the cost was going to be what the cost was regardless. So, you know, it's, when, when you're working with people, not everything works out perfectly, but I appreciate the fact that y'all, you know, identify the fact that it was an issue, and we'll, we'll do better next time, so.
Yeah, slightly on me. Just when this happened in the budget process, I was also transitioning into the new position. So this happened shortly after election, then we did the tour, then we did the, the, the new position. So it was all, I think, just timing. I want to say it was a rough estimate that he had previously gotten, which may have been a year before that, so you can only see how that could change. But yeah, typically, what we, we like to do is we like to vet these, these CIP projects a little further. You know, like I said, that's just oversight on me.
I will say this, I work in private industry where there's a lot of capital expenditures made. You guys do better than some of the guys that I work with in the private industry. So if there's anyone out there wondering, like, how could they miss on this? It's like, there are people who miss much bigger in situations where you would expect them to be, you know. Just want to make sure people aren't, aren't, aren't sitting here thinking, oh, that's just typical government. No, you guys are doing better than a lot of people in the private industry. So it happens. Any further discussion or questions on this item?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2023-02.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the ordinance? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. Which brings us to Mayor and Council comments. I'm going to start down on this end with Mayor Pro Tem Mitchum.
I don't have a whole lot of comments today, so I will pass the mic to my lovely.
Only comment that I have is there seems to be some bad weather heading our way tomorrow, so just be very vigilant and careful and stay, stay dry.
Councilmember Shepherd, to use a weather pun, stole my thunder. So, Happy New Year, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Councilmember Singleton?
I don't have any comments.
Councilmember McCray?
I got nothing.
I'll just say Happy New Year. This is a shorter-than-usual meeting, but that's not necessarily a bad thing. So with that, we will recess the regular session to move it into executive session. Council, City Council is now going to retire to a closed session at 7:35 PM pursuant to the Texas Civil Meetings Act, Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, Section 551.072 deliberations about real property, and Section 551.071 consultations with attorney in connection with the following item. Pursuant to the Texas Civil Meeting Act, Section 551.087 deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, Section 551.072 deliberations about real property, and Section 551.071 consultations with attorney. A closed meeting to deliberate information from a business prospect that the city seeks to locate in Jersey Village Terrence Number Two, and economic development negotiations including the possible purchase, exchange or real property, exchange or value of real property related thereto. We will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded. We will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded.
The closed session was adjourned at 8:09 PM and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session. That brings us to Item K1, discussing to take appropriate action on items discussed in the executive session regarding information from the business prospect that the city seeks to locate in Jerseyville's Ters number two and economic development negotiations, including the possible purchase, exchange, or value of real property related there too. I don't believe there's any action to be taken. Okay?
Mr. President?
All right. Okay, well with that then we will adjourn. Thank you folks.